Meeting is live, sir.
Welcome everyone to the Williamsport City Council meeting of Thursday, December seventeenth, two thousand and twenty. It's a little past six thirty P M. We're meeting remotely tonight as we have been. I want to announce there was the an executive session held before the meeting to discuss personnel and public safety. Move to item one, approval of city council minutes dated December third, two thousand and twenty. Is there a motion in second from council?
Don't move.
Second.
Again.
Motion in the second, any discussion from council members, questions, direction? Hearing is saying none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Cat.
Yes.
Your bank.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Alice.
Yes. Motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Move to item two, limited courtesy of the four, we've had no requests tonight. Before we move into the the other parts of the agenda, I just wanted to, is Mr. Winter on?
Yes.
Mr. Winter, would you just please briefly address for the public and council about the snow event and the response of of our streets department?
Sure, um, we received twenty-four point six inches of snow overnight. It started at roughly one P M. Yesterday, it came down very lightly. The streets department went out about nine A M. Yesterday morning and put a coat of salt down on the roads as a pre-treatment. We did have eighteen employees which filled every truck that we had. They started their day yesterday morning at seven A M. And about four thirty today, I felt like we pushed them to the max. Hour wise, during the event of the storm, we had multiple trucks that got stuck. Multiple times, the storm hit a point where it actually snowed two to three inches an hour overnight. It was very intense to keep up with. I myself got in a plow truck at roughly eight P M. Last night to try to start helping them catch up. Not that they're really behind, but just try to keep up with the storm. At roughly ten thirty last night, I ended up getting into a piece of equipment and spent five to six hours just pulling trucks out that got stuck. At one point, we actually had to shut down Hepperton Street Hill due to a dump truck that turned sideways and slid and got lodged into a bank there. It was determined that it was in our best interest not to try to recover it at that moment. It was too much of a risky situation to try to pull that truck out of there during the snowstorm. Thankfully, we had, nobody got hurt at any point when the trucks got stuck, none of the equipment was damaged when it got stuck. It is a very wet and heavy snow, I know they said it was supposed to be very light and fluffy, they were completely false. The other obstacles we ran into were, once it became daylight, people wanted to, you know, unbury their car, different things of that nature. The roadways became congested because of them moving their vehicles out to clean out their parking area. I would say by far, the Public Works Department worked very diligently and efficiently to try to clear the roadways. It is going to be a couple day process till we get it all taken care of, just due to the amount of snow that we received. We did make all main routes a priority and secondary routes were naturally following that. Alley's will be the last thing we're able to do. It shut down the transit agency for the entire day, we did shut down last night at seven P M. A lot of decisions were made by the administration to try to keep the public and the employees as safe as possible.
Thank you, Mr. Winter. We all appreciate the job that our street department did, there's none unprecedented amount of snow and we got hit hard and I think you responded admirably and the whole crew. I think all council is appreciative of of the effort that's put forward and and that the citizens can be patient, everybody's in the same situation, digging their vehicles out and trying to to get back to normal, but there's no normal when you get dumped with that with that amount of snow and one one snowfall, so. Thanks again.
Thank you.
Let's move on to item nine then. We'll move to the storm water resolution, Mrs. Frank, would you read that in short form, please?
Resolution. Resolution for the transfer of operations and tran- transition agreement for stormwater control system.
Thank you, thank you, Mrs. Frank, is there a motion from council tonight, motion in second?
Don't move.
Second.
Thank you, there's a motion in the second. Mayor Slaughter and Mr. Miller from Williamsport Municipal Water and Sewer Authority.
Yes, what you have before her, good evening, Council President Allison, Council Vice President Mealy and members of council and administration, what you have before you is a stormwater agreement that is probably six or seven years in the making. And we're glad to see it, it's finally getting some traction again. And we do have representatives here from the Water Authority and the administration that would be happy to answer some questions.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. Mr. Miller, do you have any opening comments, then I'll move to our finance committee to review this.
The agreement, the agreement moves it over effective March one, we've been working cooperating very well with the mayor's office and with city council to make it an agreement that's a great service to the citizens of Williamsport, so we're looking forward to helping to continue the good service provision.
Thank you, Mr. Miller, Ms. Mealy, Finance Committee.
Yes, this was reviewed by the Finance Committee and I think we largely discussed the fact that this has been a long time coming. And we are very pleased that we finally made it through all the you know, just the the sort of sundry politics and details surrounding the issue and and it looks like we'll be able to get everything sorted by March first. As you'll see in the agreement, the the March first deadline is a bit of a change from the agreement that we started with on this agenda. That would allow us time to to sort out a specific list of duties between the Water Authority and our staff as well as to sort out specific transfer details for the stormwater assets, as one might call them, that are that are not in fact necessarily assets to us right now. The only other thing to note is that obviously, any debts that the city has incurred for for stormwater prior to the transfer and or any other obligations or or issues arising out of out of things that that happened prior to the transfer will be the responsibility of the city, not of the Water Authority, that seems only fair. And we can all hope that that of course that will, you know, obviously the debt is already bundled into to the all of the debt that the the city has at this point. And I don't think that we anticipate any any particular issues between now and then or anything to crop up, so. This is is an exciting step, as we've discussed in the past, and and as it as it specifically states in the agreement. This allows the 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 Water Authority, which the Water and Sewer Authority, excuse me, which which already has not only the expertise, but also the equipment necessary to deal with our storm sewer system to to take over our stormwater system and among other things, the Water Authority, as everyone knows, levies a fee. You pay a fee for your water service, you pay a fee for your sanitary and 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 stormwater can function the same way. Where the city to move to upgrade our stormwater system in a way that that is undoubtedly necessary. The city would have to levy a tax to do that and taxes are only charged to taxpayers, whereas fees are charged to everyone. This is a making this a vastly more equitable means of of handling our stormwater obligations moving forward and the and the the costs associated with that, okay? As the, excuse me, the Finance Committee forwarded forwarded this to the full body of council with positive recommendation and I'll defer to other members if they recollect other elements of discussion.
Mrs. Cat.
Yes, this has been, as everybody has said, a long time coming. I think one of the discussions I think we're going to have to have is for the public to become aware of of the changes that are going to come on their bills, which I know you will take care of, but I also really want to thank Wendy and and for all the hard work this woman has put in over these years. Mike, you, Michael, you were there on, we were on the committee together and now you are also working on this now, so I mean, you have transitioned from the committee to what is the process of this and I know we as the city are very happy with the way this is this has been going at this point and it's going to be a long road to hoe at this point because of all the work that has to be put into this. But it's beneficial for everybody involved and thank you both very much for everything you've put into it.
Thank you, Barney. Other comments? From council members, sir?
Could I, could I add one more, just just a matter of housekeeping, I know there were a couple subtle changes that council suggested for the document. For housekeeping, I will run that back through my board in January and we should have that buttoned up pretty easy, I don't foresee any issues with those comments.
This one thought I had was, most of the city is on a combined stormwater sewer system. And when there is a a break in the stormwater pipes or or the pipes to carry that people are are charged for that repair, pay for it in the fees as it is, that's a cost of just comes to mind, the one that was on Campbell Street that was so expensive to repair. And there's a a good chance, because of the age of the system, there's other ticking time bombs just like that one. This is the way to to move out that cost, I think. The users are going to get charged for the upgrade and repair of the system, whether it's over a period of time that's planned or it's just failure of the system. It's better to have a plan to replace and repair as we go than just react to emergency, so. It's it's not quite totally an added cost, it's something we're paying for as we go, it just separates it out where you can quantify the the cost of upkeeping that system, so. Yeah, I I think it's going to be very economical for regular residential fee payers to to come for us to assess it like that. Any other comments or questions? Okay, then Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Cat.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank, we'll move to item ten, which is a demo and lot consolidation. My coming college. Mr. Gahr. Welcome.
Good evening, Mr. Allison and members of city council. What I what I bring before you tonight is a demo application request and lot consolidation request by like coming college. What they're requesting to do is they have, there's four parcels on West Four Street, which the parcel, the house numbers are three fourteen, three sixteen, three twenty-eight and three thirty-four. They currently own the properties, they are requesting to demo those for a future land development plan, and again, that's why the lot consolidation is brought before you as well. What they are requesting to do again is do the demo of those three houses and then they will take a total of eight parcels which you have in front of you and combine them as one parcel, that would be a little over one acres. This plan was reviewed by the county and also was reviewed by the planning commission. The county's comments, the plans that you actually have before you are corrected copies of the comments from the county. So you do have the corrected copies and the updated copies. And again, I do have a representative here and what they're requesting to do is demo those three houses add the total of eight separate parcels into one parcel for a future land development that will be required to come before council.
Thank you, Mr. Gahr. Is there a motion in second from council on this?
Second.
There's a motion in second, a discussion now from council for question.
Um, just one quick question, Mr. Allison, if I might, Mr. Gahr, did you say that there was a timeline specific to this development?
I I don't specifically have a timeline, I'm already in conversations with both the architect and the engineering firm that is doing the land development plan, so we are in motion with that. It is my understanding that something won't happen till probably sometime after the first of the year, early spring.
Okay, that's fine, I just wanted to make certain it wasn't one of those things where we were taking the structures down and then not anticipating anything until next year, or I'm sorry, two or three years down the road, because that would be kind of a bummer, so.
No, this is something that that this is something that they're definitely moving forward with with a rapid pace, what it will be is a music, a music building.
Yep, that's that's fantastic, I think that'll be a huge asset down there, so, okay, thanks very much.
Any other questions or comments? Hearing is saying none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Cat.
Uh, yes.
Your banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Your Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Okay, we will move back up to item number, item five. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance amending Article three twenty-seven cable T V systems of the codified ordinances of the city, setting the franchise fee of five percent in the final reading.
Is there a motion in second?
So move.
So move.
Second.
There's a motion in the second, this is the second reading, we've had discussion on it. Are there any more comments or questions from council tonight? Again, hearing is saying none, Mrs. Frank on this motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Cat.
Yes.
Your banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Your Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Item six, a resolution for the collective bargaining agreement, would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution approving a collective bargaining agreement between the city of Williamsport F O P Lodge number twenty-nine.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank, is there a motion in the second from council?
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in the second, this was reviewed in our chief Hagan. Turn to you first, we've discussed this before.
Uh, yes, this is the collective bargaining agreement that we have discussed at length negotiated by the mayor, myself, the assistant chief and Joe Ellen Chappelle. Many sessions and back and forth, we were able to come to a an agreement. And it has been reviewed by the solicitor. We believe it's a good agreement. We've had discussion with council on multiple occasions about it and we are again presenting it to you here tonight. We believe there were many concessions, the union itself has voted to accept this and voted unanimously despite the concessions that they made. So we feel good about it and we ask that you take this under consideration and I'm available for any questions, thank you.
Thank you, Chief Hagan, this was reviewed in Finance Committee.
Uh, yes, it was, um, thanks, Randy. So to cover first things first, the Finance Committee forwarded this item with no recommend or with a negative recommendation, excuse me. And and that was based on two votes, one dissenting, I was the one dissenting. The the, we obviously had mixed feelings, as one might infer from the from the recommendation. I I believe that the other two members of the committee felt that we would have liked to see further concessions and I can let them speak to that if they'd like. For my part, while I understand that 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 this isn't a perfect contract from the city's perspective, frankly, I think that the police department that the union did did collaborate with the city at a tough year and that we and that we got a good a good contract, perhaps not as good as we would have loved to see it, but 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 as good as we could have hoped for, so I will be supporting this this evening. And and I think that it is a that is a strong contract and I commend the the chief and the and the union for working well together in the administration. But of course, we will hope to see to see other concessions and further concessions in the in the next iteration of this contract as well. As I said, I'll defer to other members of the committee, thanks, Randy.
You're welcome, thanks, Ms. Mealy, other members of Finance. Mr. Yoder.
Uh, sure, yeah, as well, one of the two votes for a negative recommendation, yeah, you know, certainly certainly appreciate the efforts of the police union and the administration in going after this contract. Certainly is a solid start, but you know, certainly would have liked to have seen more. I I I, you know, there, I I think there are more things we could have hopefully got on the healthcare side, you know, they unfortunately do not match what we have in a couple of our other union contracts, the salaries unfortunately are not as equitable as some of our other salaries in our other public safety and first responder contracts as well, and and unfortunately, you know, frankly, it's just you know, given the challenges we faced this year, this certainly could have been an avenue where I think would have helped us in a lot of the deliberations that we're having, because this not only has ripple effects next year in two thousand and twenty-one, but this is a four-year contract, so certainly will appreciate the efforts and thank them for good faith efforts. It's just unfortunately difficult for me to support that at this at this time and nonetheless appreciate the collaboration in the discussion on that, thank you.
Mrs. Cat.
Being the other descending vote, I have to agree with where where Adam is coming from, I think our discussions all year have have been how are we going to protect the city and the city's taxpayers and how are we going to continue as a city? And I and I applaud what the chief has done with this contract with the union, I really do, I know how difficult this can be. But under the circumstances, I think everybody has got to understand that we have to protect the whole city, not just one unit of the city and it's it's been very difficult, very, very difficult, because I know how hard our police officers work, I know how hard our chief works to to try and do the best they can, but under the circumstances, because of where we stand financially with the city I I find this one very, very difficult, so and those are my reasons, it it all boils down to the dollar, it really does. Not to the way the decisions have been made and not to where the negotiations. We do look forward to in four years, trying to cut it down even even more. And hopefully, it's going to be worked on that in the next four years, so I'm still going to have to say no to this.
Other members of council. Mr. Pelizzi.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Again, just to mirror what both Councilman Yoder and Councilman Cat said, chief applaud yours and Ms. Chappelle's efforts and the mayor's efforts to negotiate with the union the way they did. However, given all the circumstances, given everything that's happened through this year, you know, a lot of people have become unemployed or affected financially because of the the COVID nineteen pandemic. I just cannot find a reason, I I I really want to support this this agreement, I I fully support our police officers, I support everything that they do. However, it it comes down to finance for me, we, I I don't see where we have the money. If if this if the situation was different, by all means, I would I would agree wholeheartedly, I just don't see how I can support this though. As part of a a bigger hole that would lead to further tax burden on our taxpayers, given everything that's happened this year, so. I I thought it was a great starting point, if one or two more concessions had been made or matched by some other unions, I'd be in full support of this. But uh, so for those matters, I will also be voting no. But thank you again, chief, and everybody else that was was part of this.
Mr. Banks.
Um, I think it's really important at this point to take into account how far the unions come. If this contract goes to arbitration, we have a lot more to lose than we could possibly gain in terms of what's been negotiated down to at this point, so I'm a yes on this because I think it's actually the the fiscally prudent stance to make sure we keep the gains that we've made. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Other comments? Um, I'll just say that I think Mr. Banks has hit the what this comes down to at this point, what's in the contract at this point has been negotiated, so now we're we're faced with the decision. We either pass the contract or we don't, and if we don't pass the contract the the fact of it is, it goes to arbitration. And with with the outlook for arbitration that's backed up by professional opinion we would stand to lose because of the concessions that the police union has made. They've taken a step in the direction we wanted them to, maybe we would like they've taken a few steps, they they moved in different areas, we would like another step or two. But to risk arbitration, I think is too big of a risk under the current circumstances, and that's what it comes down to. Yes, this is going to cost money. If we go to arbitration, because it's costing money and then end up having it cost us more money. I don't see the logic in that, but then that's one, support it tonight, but I do appreciate the the effort that Chief Hagan and Joe Ellen Chappelle or H R and and the administration did in in negotiating these things and we we got movement in areas like healthcare and pension and those things that that I think are important and going to pay, those are going to pay benefits year over year moving forward. So that's why I'm going to support it, are there any other comments, I don't see or hear any? So Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
No.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
No.
Mrs. Cat.
No.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Your Allison.
Yes. Motion passes four to three. Thank you, Mr. Frank. We will move to item seven. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
Resolution authorizing the Williamsport Bureau Police to hire one police officer, Brandon Wheeler.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second from council?
Move.
Second.
Motion in second. Chief Hagan. You're muted, chief.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, President Allison, members of the administration. Again, we bring before you applicant number 12 from our current social service list. Mr. Brandon Wheeler, present with us on this, this Zoom meeting. Brandon, we know him and we've known him for a while. He was a, an intern here while he was in college. Fantastic young man. He has recently completed the police academy at Mansfield. So if hired on our proposed date of January 4th, 2021, he would be able to go right to the street. Mr. Wheeler is 23 years old and he's from Mill Hall, Pennsylvania. He's the son of Rodney and Tina Wheeler. He's a 2015 graduate of Central Mountain High School and also a graduate, a graduate of South Hill School of Business and Technology where he has an associate's degree in criminal justice. He is, again, a recent graduate of the Mansfield Academy and he has passed our background investigation with flying colors and has been recommended to me by the agent who did that background investigation. I have approved and so has the mayor of his hire. Mr. Wheeler would be if hired today, the 48th, however, his proposed date of hire is the same day that our Assistant Chief Mark Seacrest retires, January 4th. So he would be number 47. We, in his proposed badge number, by the way, is badge number 31. We, we really, really recommend hiring Mr. Wheeler. It's rare that you get a young man, a police candidate of this quality. It would, I think it would be, despite our financial concerns, a mistake to pass him up. And I know this was brought before finance and there was certainly some hesitation there, given the financial constraints and the pending budget talks and so forth. But I think if we're going to stay at 47, you can't do any better than Brandon Wheeler. And so with that, I'd like to present Mr. Wheeler to council and I take any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief Hagan. Welcome tonight, Brandon. We're very happy to, to have you with us tonight. I'm going to temporarily refer to the Finance Committee that was reviewed there and let Ms. Mealy have the floor.
Yep, Randy, this was reviewed in finance and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We are, while we had some discussion about, you know, police funding, et cetera, et cetera, and looking to the future. I think the overwhelming sentiment was that we, 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 we want to bring our police department up to, up to a full complement. Mr. Wheeler will mark the, will, will mark something very close to the end of our current hiring list, which means we'll, we will need some time to, to, to create a new one. And and I'm just trying to remember what else, what else she, what else she said about him. Anyway, he's, he's an excellent candidate. It's particularly exciting when he comes to us and is ready to go out on the street as soon as he arrives. Because of course, our, our, our previous two hires are, are just about to, to enter the police force now. So we have a kind of a freshman class year going on, I guess, huh, chief? Anyway, as I said, forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. I'll defer to the other members of finance if I've missed anything. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Other members of Finance. Mrs. Katz.
Yes, I, I, you know, under the circumstances, chief, you know, we've discussed finances, finances, finances till it comes out of our ears. We do realize that we have to keep our compliment up to, Brandon is going to make this, why can't I remember what you said, 47 or 48, come January 2nd?
He would be 47 because Mark Seacrest retires the same day.
Right. So we're still haven't brought it up to what, what the compliment is budgeted for. Brandon, I do want to welcome you and thank you very much for putting yourself forward here and again, thank you and thank you, chief.
Mr. Yoder.
Yeah, I'll, I'll minic Councilwoman Katz's sentiments. You know, we, we've, the past number of weeks talked a lot about, you know, the fiscal situation we're in. We've asked a lot of our police department as a part of that. I have as an individual, I've certainly recognized that. And while I absolutely disagree with the mechanisms that the police are working under with the contractors, I voted against it. I also do recognize that we need to have adequate people there. And I'll happily support this, but I will challenge you, chief. I'm anxious to see how the police force does with a, a number of 47. And if we do need to go to 48, my challenge to you is going to be we need to figure out how to live within the 48 because I'm afraid the problems that we're running into this year, they might be reoccurring for sure over the next couple of years. So I know we ask a lot out of you. I certainly have in this budget. I know you're up to the task. I'm hoping that you can come up with some things here, working within that.
Actually, later, the mayor during the, the discussion on the budget is going to introduce an idea brought about by an earlier challenge from you, sir. And that, that idea would have us staying at 47 and enabling other things to occur because of that. So also, in our effort to be transparent and to give you all of the information you need, we would like to extend an invitation for you to do a ride along with the bureau at any time you would like, sir. That, and that goes out to all council members. We know Councilman Mackey has been a regular stay on all of our patrol shifts, but we would, we would encourage all, all of you who would like, certainly after the vaccine is available and we're able to, to be around each other a little more, to come out with us and see what we do. Hopefully that would help and give you a better understanding because it's not all Xs and Os and dollars and cents. Thank you.
Yeah, understood. I, I had full intention to do that before this all happened. I unfortunately didn't get to. I very much look forward to doing that and will absolutely do that when the time is right. And so I very much appreciate that, chief.
Could we temporarily deputize Councilman Mackey to to do some things? Just kidding. Other comments from council members? Mr. Wheeler, we're certainly happy to have you coming on board. We're, we have a police force that's getting younger and in transitioning and we're excited about that because you're joining a, a force of the future that is, we really believe they're going to do some really good things in the city. So are there any comments you'd like to make? All right, you're muted. There you go.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
All right. I'd just like to say thanks for the consideration and everything and I look forward to hopefully becoming a part of this department. I've worked with them before, as Chief Hagan said. They work as a great team. I can't wait to be part of that team and I just hope to be able to help everyone out and try to keep everyone safe.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
We really appreciate that, the sentiments. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Kat.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes seven zero. Mr. Wheeler, welcome aboard and congratulations. And we wish you the best. And if we were in City Hall, we would mention that above the, the city seal, it says, serve and protect. And that's what our police force does and we know you're going to uphold those two values with a, a great performance and ability.
And thank you, Mr. Allison and City Council.
You're quite welcome. Mrs. Katz.
Randy, it will be fantastic. We'll only get back to some normal meetings and in person that if we can get to meet the families and all the people that have been hired and throughout, that we have not met in person and to welcome them. It's, this has been such a hard year and you, you don't, you know, even though we're, we're seeing you on a screen, it's, it's not like the same thing in person. And I, you know, I think it would be who of us, and I'd also like to see the dogs.
That's a great idea, Mrs. Katz. I think Chief Hagan can arrange that.
Absolutely. We can bring the dogs to you if you like, man.
That'd be fantastic.
Okay. Well, thank you very much. And that was a good, good discussion. Okay, let's move on to item eight. Mrs. Frank in short form, please.
Resolution of the City Council of the City of Williamsport to adopt an RVT safety and security plan.
Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Is there a motion in second from council?
So move.
Second.
There's a motion in second. Welcome, Mr. Winder.
Good evening. This is a resolution to adopt the safety plan for River Valley Transit. It is a requirement by the FTA that we have one. River Valley Transit does have a safety and security officer, which is Chris Smith. I believe he is on here. Chris worked extremely hard to write this safety plan. He did submit it to the FTA for their review since it's so new. And I believe we submitted it back in September. It was recently approved, which was not exactly how we thought it was going to work out. We thought that they would come back with some corrections or other things they would like to see in it. So we sent it in early on for them to review it. It's technically not due till the end of December. Chris did such an excellent job with it. It was approved and now we just need to bring this resolution in front of City Council for their approval to adopt it on behalf of River Valley Transit. And Chris Smith is on this call. If anybody would have any questions in regards to it, he is the best person to answer them since he didn't write it.
Thank you, Mr. Winder. This was reviewed in Finance. Ms. Mealy.
Randy, my apologies. Yes, it was. Sorry, it took me a second to get to that mute button. Anyway, yes, this one's reviewed in Finance and forwarded to the full body of council with a positive recommendation. We had a handful of discussions about it. They largely centered a little bit on the sort of unusual procedure of getting councils approval to adopt after we'd gotten PennDOT's approval to adopt. But that was the requested procedure in this case. And this is a relatively new format for us. So, so we're, we're excited that they, that they, that they approved it so rapidly on with kind of flying colors. That's everything. Thanks, Randy.
Thank you, Ms. Mealy. Other comments or questions from Finance Committee members? Or anybody on council? Okay, hearing is being done. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey. Mr. Mackey.
You're muted, John.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yep.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. We will move up to item three. We're back to our ordinance adopting various operating budgets for the city of Williamsport. So this is, we, we had this table. So is there a motion to remove this from the table?
I'll move.
Second.
Motion in a second. Mrs. Frank on the motion to remove from the table, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Your banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. It's removed from the table and it's back up for discussion. I'm going to open it up. Address Mayor Slaughter tonight. We've done, council's done a lot of work on this budget here before. And we asked the administration to come back with a half mil of cuts. And so I'm going to turn it over to the mayor.
Thank you, Council President Allison. Yes, as a council, I'd ask the administration to come back with a half a mil cuts. And again, we appreciate the work that City Council and administration have done, given this budget this year, the constraints that we are all under. And so once, you know, once I brought it back and, and we started to review, there are 850,000 in the City Hall account. So if we utilize that account and then replenish, because we had a somewhat lengthy discussion during the Finance Committee on Tuesday, given some of the items going on with City Hall and the, the decisions we'll be making here in the future at some point. Whether this day go, another building, whatever that, that decision might be. So there was some talk about wanting to keep the City Hall account. You know, with some funds in there, which this wasn't to replenish all of it, but we just, you know, we can utilize Act 13 as well. That would allow the City Hall account to stay at the balance where it is. Furthermore, and what we was just alluded to earlier with Councilman Yoder and Chief Hagan, after discussing with the chief, since we'll be at a complement of 47 when we hire, or as Mr. Wheeler's hire was just approved by City Council, she, Assistant Chief Seacrest will retire simultaneously essentially. So we've decided to propose that we stay at 47 officers. And for the, for the, you know, for this budget season, we believe that we could live within our means with 47. And so we'll, we'll propose that as well. So this gets us two to half a mil savings. Maybe a, a little bit more, but so, you know, that's where, that's where we think this evening. It would be the cleanest and easiest moving forward. And, and we can revisit some of this in the near future with Officer 48 or some other items as we, as we move forward. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Obviously, this has to take the, the form of several motions and, and votes to accomplish that. Are there comments or? are there uh comments or questions about Mr. Yoder?
Uh, yeah, just a couple of questions, just to make sure that I'm understanding the um, the 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 thought process, the flows of money and what have you. Um, so if I'm understanding this, um, not including the um, the forty-seven um level of staffing in the Police Department, um, not including in this. So we currently have eight hundred and fifty thousand dollars in the City Hall Operating Fund under the proposal from Mayor Slaughter. Um, if I'm doing my math correctly, we would eliminate the three hundred and tw- three hundred and fifty thousand dollars currently um allocated to be contributed to the fund. Um, we would keep the expenditures in there because that's what operates City Hall Utilities, et cetera, which are two hundred and ninety thousand dollars and change. Um, sounds like we want to, they're proposing to take about twenty-five thousand dollars as a transfer out of that. Leaves us with a balance of five hundred and thirty-four, five hundred roughly. Um, and if I also understand it, um, we were going to leverage um, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of Act thirteen money. So we would have available eight hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars of available capital roughly for City Hall repairs between two different funds, correct?
Those numbers sound correct. I'll defer to Joe Pavlock, but I believe I believe that is accurate.
Correct. Correct.
Okay, um, understanding this, um, and as somebody who asked for uh an idea from the administration, I think I can live with this. Um, by my math, I think this is this is fifty thousand dollars left of available funding for City Hall. I think in this year, I think that's something that I can live with at least. Um, that reduces this three hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Um, if I recall, there were some additional general fund changes. Were they a part or as a result of the um maintaining a level of um, the forty-seven uh level complement in the Police Department? They were not?
They they were not. No, we actually uh discussed that after I had Joe Pavlock put together um those numbers specifically around the City Hall account.
Okay.
So that would be, sorry, go ahead.
No, no, go ahead. I'm sorry.
But that would be in addition to what you just uh laid out right there.
Okay, so between having eight hundred and roughly sixty thousand dollars available for City Hall, which is actually about a ten thousand dollar increase, um, between the changes that you had and the eliminating City Hall, we're saving or minimizing the general fund by four hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars and change roughly. So about half a mil. That's how you're getting to a half a mil, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, I think I can support that. Um, I think that is my, given the current year, um, as uh this is an item that's been kicked down way, way too long. I think we can all agree on that, but I think that if we can hold that eight hundred and sixty there, I think that's adequate to get us started depending on what we do. Um, I think I can support that. So Mayor Slaughter, uh, thank you for coming up with that.
Welcome. And can I just, are you done, Councilman? Can I can I jump back in real quick?
Yep.
All right. Um, and also that that also uh buys us a little bit of time as we discuss the City Hall options. Uh, I know council throughout there um to review about the borrowing, um, and whether or not City Council or uh, excuse me, City Hall may or may not play into that that decision. Um, so it gives us some time here as we're weighing all of the various decisions, the full uh City Hall options, uh Bowman Field, et cetera. Um, to really look at the borrowing and not to exceed amount, what all we're going to include in that. Um, so I appreciate that, Councilman. It does it does give us a little bit of time, um, which is why we felt um this may be the easiest. This is not uh, any, by any means, uh, what we plan to do, you know, year over year, obviously, um, twenty twenty uh clearly was a little different. So um, you know, it it it, and also it leaves it in that City Hall account, but then again, we're not going to, you know, it's not like uh, once we make a decision, we'll, you know, we're going to stroke a check for eight hundred thousand dollars uh on day one. So it does give us a little bit of time uh to figure out kind of what the borrowing looks like, what we're going to do and and make some decisions here in the future. So, thank you.
Mrs. Katz.
Uh, this is a question for Joe Pavlock. Uh, Joe, uh, under, you know, since we're using Act thirteen money for City Hall, why has this never been approached with before? When we've been struggling so much with trying to do repairs and everything else in City Hall, uh, we more or less were not told we could do that.
Uh, each year we allocate the funds um in a budget. These were residual funds um that we're proposing to move out of a prior project into the current. So um, it it was something that this is the time that we, uh, that the mayor of the administration thought that this is something we should move on um to not deplete the balance that we have current for City Hall and 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 move from there.
Even though it was initially coming from Act thirteen?
It is under this.
I mean, this is what uh, this, uh, am I understanding this right or wrong? That the money that's being utilized for for City Hall is coming out of Act thirteen? Uh, but I was, but we were told we couldn't do that before.
Uh, I'm not sure who said that.
Over the years, when we've, when we've struggled so hard for um HVAC systems and roof leaking and things like that, trying to come up with the funds to repair, uh, why couldn't we have gone through Act thirteen at that point, especially when we were getting a lot of Act thirteen?
In the years.
Question, because I I just want to, you know, in my head clarify this.
In in previous years, that the funding sources have mainly been towards streets, um, towards levy improvements, um, setting aside money for those projects. So um, I guess the administration feels at this point that um, we can uh waiver on some of those other items and reallocate it towards issues.
But it's not the administration. Act thirteen sets their guidelines of what you can use the money for. And and that's that's why I'm, I I I'm very happy that it's coming up this way. I'm just questioning why we couldn't have done this before.
I believe that other projects have taken priority at 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 those times. I
But we are, the projects at City Hall, some of them are were were I trying to patch a roof and doing a piecemeal because we couldn't come up with any money. And that's that's why I'm questioning this. I just don't want, I don't want to, I don't want to come back a year or two from now saying, oh, we weren't supposed to touch that money. I want to make sure that this is perfectly legal to do this. That's that's why I'm I'm asking this question.
And and I I think that the belief is that this is falling under public, public infrastructure. Um, and and that's what we're proposing to move it from or to.
Yes, Councilwoman, from everything um that we've read, this this qualifies. I can't speak, obviously, for uh prior administrations. Um, but when we reviewed this and everything that we've read and uh and been told it that Act thirteen wouldn't qualify.
I think you can all understand, you know, the the frustration that you're hearing that this could be used now when we struggled for how many years with trying to uh maintain the the projects in City Hall uh and trying to come up with the funds for things. I think that's the things, that's why I'm I I'm happy, don't get me wrong. I'm I'm pleased that this is being used, that we can do it. I'm just sad that we had to wait so long to be able to do this.
Uh, I think one of the things, uh, Mrs. Katz, is that um we, we talked a lot about the HVAC system, but we never, it never got to the planning stage. Uh, so the funding for it never got addressed because it never progressed. Most of it never progressed past that. And um, I I think that's one of the reasons why possibly it was never considered before, because we did use it for for public facilities. Uh, a a portion of it went to street paving and and things like that. Um, so that, that's my, one of the things that I that I attributed to. Um, there was a lot of talk about the things we needed, but we never got to the point where, okay, this is what we're going to do and this is when we're going to do it. Um, so we never talked too much about the finances.
But we kept on putting money aside for this, for the repairs of City Hall. Every year we kept on putting aside and and not utilizing and and being so careful. And and where we were going with raising taxes, not raising taxes. So um, I'm just, I just want to clarify that this is, this is going to be fine.
Understand, that's a good, I I think I I guess they, I mean, I believe they've done their due diligence to to verify that that is an actuality.
Okay, that's, I I just wanted to clarify. Very happy where you've come from.
Yeah, good point, fine. Um,
So. Hey, Randy, if I, if I can put something out there.
Yes.
Um, just, okay.
To pick up. Work, go ahead.
Yeah, yeah. Well, I I just wanted to say, buddy, I think, I I think this pretty clearly falls under the public infrastructure descriptor. Um, so I'm not super concerned about being able to use it. I think as as we've covered in years past, um, a- as we all know, we have so many needs as a municipality. Um, that could be met by this funding and uh and streets are are absolutely one of them. Um, however, we're we're in a better place with streets currently because of all the utility work than we were expecting to be. And um, and this money was is basically a re-appropriated surplus from years past. Um, money that we're that we're fortunate to have and that we were intending to spend on on streets, but that we will hopefully be able to to replace perhaps in in uh twenty twenty-two or twenty twenty-three. Um, this this is not, this is somewhat of an extraordinary measure, I guess you might say, and not something that I would necessarily uh support doing in an average year, because I do believe that, um, especially City Hall, we we should be able to fund out of our own budget. But if we amplify or we decrease a streets project predicated on how much we receive in um, Act thirteen funding, that's one thing. But uh, but you know, we we, um, this is an extraordinary year. We're trying to lessen the burden on the taxpayers. Um, and if we have surplus funding from prior years in Act thirteen that we can utilize to do that, um, I I think it's absolutely desirable this year. Um, that said, I would be happy to begin the uh somewhat arduous process of proposing amendments to make this proposal of the administration's an on-paper reality. Um, if everyone else feels comfortable with that, or if there are other people who who wanted to enter in the into the discussion before we start making amendments, I'm happy to to step back and and listen to the discussion for for a little longer.
Um, I'm fine with that. Is everyone else?
I'm fine with it, and I'm happy to second those motions, Liz.
Terrific. Thanks, Adam.
Thank you.
Um, okay, so the the first thing that I'd like to propose, um, kind of a large one, and and excuse me, do we have Austin or Norm on this uh meeting tonight?
Norm, we have Norm.
Norm, hey, Norm, how you doing? Um, uh, Norm, I would like to go ahead and roll up decreasing all of the office rent items in the general fund budget to zero um as one motion. Uh, that that is a legitimate amendment, correct?
Um, you really should put it as one motion or a separate motions for each individual line item.
For each general fund line item?
Yeah.
Okay.
The reason for, in case you're split, only because there might be split votes, that's why.
Um, uh, Norm, would it be allowable for me to ask council members if anyone has a split vote on this item? And then move
Yeah, you might as well.
Single motion?
Then you could.
Okay.
Yeah, then you could do a single.
Okay, guys, I I don't mind lining it out, but it's going to take about an extra half an hour to do that. Um, does anyone have an objection to me rolling all of these items up?
I don't.
Making them one motion.
I don't, Liz.
Nope.
Nope.
Okay.
No.
If if you if you do speak now, forever hold your peace. All right. Um, okay. All right, then I will make a motion that we reduce every item in the general fund re- relating to office rent from uh whatever it currently stands at to zero. Mr. Yoder.
I will second that.
Okay, thank you.
There's a motion you second to make a reduction to uh like an office rent? And reduce it to zero? Any discussion on that? Hearing none. Mrs. Frank on that motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion to reduce passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Uh, great. Thanks, guys. All right. Um, next item, I would make a motion that we ch-ch-ch-ch, excuse me, um, increase uh, Mr. Pavlock, can you give me some guidance on exactly how I should phrase this? Um, on page ten, line zero five zero six, four six nine one zero. Uh, transfer to City Hall operating.
Yeah, this is.
This is creating a line, Mr. Pavlock, I assume?
Uh, I think that the line's currently funded at zero.
Okay, but there is, there is a line.
It's not showing in the, it is, it's, it's adding a new line.
Okay, so I, so I would make a motion to create a line on page ten, um, zero five zero six, four six nine one zero. Uh, transfer from City Hall operating, um, and that we would um take that line item, increase it from zero to twenty-five thousand dollars.
I'll second.
Is everybody following that?
Guys, this is happening a little bit out of sequence, and I apologize. Um, we're 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 doing a handful of things. We're reducing the uh, the three hundred thousand dollar contribution that we would have been making out of every department in the city to rent um, to zero, but we're also putting a contribution in for twenty-five thousand dollars um from the general fund. Uh, Mr. Pavlock, it was, excuse me, explain to me again, then, that twenty-five thousand is coming from where in the general fund? I apologize, or or it's coming from the bottom line? Uh, we've been moving this around a lot.
That will add to the bottom line and then be replenished um with a future reduction in City Hall.
Okay, um, there you go, guys. So it's 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 not a direct transfer from one department to to this line. Um, it's a transfer from the bottom line, but we'll be, we'll be adding money to the bottom line elsewhere, um, as we just added three hundred thousand dollars to the bottom line from the office wrench. Okay?
Is there a second on this motion, then?
Yeah, I seconded it, Randy.
Okay, motion in a second. Any other discussion from council members? I hear and see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Younger.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Your Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Okay, um, next up, to put this in a slightly more understandable order, um, on page sixty, under our Act thirteen budget, there are no line uh numbers in this budget. Um, however, I would add a line called re-appropriated surplus budget, surplus budget only. Um, and I would take that line from zero to three hundred thousand dollars. Um, this money is the is the money uh from the four hundred and fifty thousand dollar prior year surplus we had related to streets um being transferred as a re-appropriated surplus into this year's Act thirteen budget, so that we can transfer it out to City Hall.
I'll second that.
Okay, there's a motion in a second. Um, any questions from council members on this particular move? Okay, I hear and see none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Yoder.
Yes.
Mackey.
Yes.
Your Pelosi.
Hold on.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Your Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And thank you, Mrs. Mealy.
Okay, uh, even I might be about to get bogged down in some of this here. But uh, on page sixty, um, I would then like to, under Act thirteen, I would then like to create a line for City Hall improvements. Um, this will obviously fall into the expenditures, whereas the three hundred thousand dollars that a line that we just created would have fall, uh, would fall under um income to Act thirteen. Uh, so this line will be City Hall improvements. Uh, so this line will be City Hall improvements, um, and will be, will be, um, o- obviously originally funded at zero, and we're going to increase that to three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars.
I will second that.
There's a motion in the second. So now we have, uh, six twenty-five in the, for City Hall.
Mm-hmm.
Um, questions or comments from council members?
Actually, the one thing that I wanted to clarify, Randy, is, Mr. Pavlock, we do not need to then transfer this fund, show any transfer of this money into the City Hall operating budget, correct?
No, it's gonna sit, it's gonna sit there. It'll sit in Act thirteen, then, I, I think to complete this series, you'll want to go up to the City Hall budget and make the, uh, the changes there.
Yep, um, yes, I will, uh.
On page fifty-seven.
Yep, yeah, exactly. I'll, I'll take care of that in one second when we vote on that, on this too. Um, so just to be clear then with all members of council, this three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars then will sit in Act thirteen in the way that that four hundred and fifty thousand for streets that we just re-appropriated a portion of has been sitting over the last few years, um, until we make a decision on expenditures related to City Hall and/or moving and/or upgrading City Hall. Um, and then that money would be taken directly from the Act thirteen line. Okay?
Yes, that makes sense. Um, question? Or comment? Um, I hear and see none. Mrs. Frank on this motion, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Peliz?
Yes.
Mrs. Cat?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Okay, then, Mr. Pavlock's suggestion, to make this once again as comprehensible as possible, even though apparently it's also incomprehensible to me, we're gonna go to, uh, page fifty-seven. Um, and the City Hall lines, um, uh, so first off, we're going to modify line eight zero zero one, four, six, two, three, zero. That would be internal, um, rental income.
Mm-hmm.
We're going to take that from three hundred thousand dollars to zero.
Okay.
Uh, Mr. Yoder, anybody else want to second that?
Second, sorry.
No, no problem. I didn't phrase it as an amendment, I just realized that, so.
Uh, what I call it that is I'm in the middle, look, hold on a second.
Hey Bonnie, you're not on mute.
Oh, you're not muted.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, there's a motion in the second. Um, discussion from the council. Does everybody have a sense where we're flowing here? I think so, okay.
Yeah.
Um, there's no other questions? Uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Peliz?
Yes.
Cat?
Janice, I think we can wait on Mrs. Cat's for this one. Do you wanna?
Yes.
Okay.
Was that a yes?
She, that was a yes.
Yeah, that was a yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank and Ms. Mealy.
Great, next item on page fifty-seven, um, this is, uh, Mr. Pavlock, is this accurate, eight zero zero two? Oh, yes, this will be, this will be, um, sorry, income versus expense. Um, okay, uh, eight zero zero two, seven, eight, one, seven, seven. Um, transfer to general fund. Uh, we're going to increase the transfer. Mr. Pavlock, are we creating this line, or are we?
Yes.
Yes, we are. Okay, so we'll create this line and then fund it with twenty-five thousand dollars, guys.
Yeah.
Um, for a total transfer into the general fund, for a total drop to the bottom line of three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars from these particular items.
Mm-hmm.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Discussion or comment from councilmen. We're getting there.
Mm-hmm, slow but sure, slow but sure.
Yeah, yeah, but it's, uh, here we end up. It's gonna be the payoff. Um, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Peliz?
Yes.
Mrs. Cat?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank and, and Ms. Mealy. Okay.
Okay. Um, then, the next related motion to, to create that, um, four hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar drop in the bottom line, um, that we need to get to put us, um, to a half a mil, uh, tax increase from a mil, um, will be, uh, first off, excuse me, a decrease in the general fund on page twenty-eight. Um, that's line two, two, eight, oh, seven, six, zero, five, two. Um, the line is flood levy certification. We're going to decrease that line from a hundred thousand dollars to zero. Just so that everyone understands where we're going here, um, we are then going to also derive that money from Act thirteen. Um, we're, we're going to put the levy money into Act thirteen. Mr. Banks, in our last council meeting, um, had reduced an expenditure related to stormwater, um, from a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to fifty thousand dollars, leaving a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar unappropriated amount in Act thirteen. Um, so between the twenty-five thousand dollars, um, transferred to City Hall, uh, impro- improvements, and the hundred thousand dollars that we will transfer with the next motion to, uh, levy improvements, we will have, um, utilize that hundred thousand dollars in current year Act thirteen funding. Um, but first, we will decrease the flood levy, levy certification line, um, in the general fund budget to zero, expecting to, uh, to, to recreate that funding in, um, Act thirteen.
Thank you. There's a motion in the second. Thank you, Ms. Mealy, and thank you, Mr. Yoder. Um, uh, any question on that explanation, what's happening here? Okay, hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Peliz?
Yes.
Mrs. Cat?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank and Ms. Mealy.
Okay, can I finish off that motion then, um, Mr. Allison?
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, I'm gonna take us back to page sixty on the Act thirteen budget. Uh, and under the line levy improvements, I'm going to increase that line from zero to a hundred thousand dollars.
You wrote to a hundred thousand? There's a motion.
I can.
And there's a second. Uh, questions from council on that move? Hearing and seeing none. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder?
Yes.
Mr. Mackey?
Yes.
Mr. Peliz?
Yes.
Mrs. Cat?
Yes.
Mr. Banks?
Yes.
Mealy?
Yes.
Mr. Allison?
Yes, motion passes seven oh, thank you, Mrs. Frank and Ms. Mealy.
Okay, um, shall I keep going? Anybody else wanna, wanna, uh, make any sort of motions here, or shall I, um, keep, keep, uh, kinda moving forward with the administration's suggestions for the moment?
Mr. Yoder?
Um.
Yeah, I did wanna ask, um, Chief, since we took care of, I think, the, the majority of the key ones there, I did wanna, um, ask Chief Hagan, the mayor, about, um, the, uh, specifics on, um, staying at forty-seven. Um, can you, can you go speak to that? And Liz, I'm sorry, I don't know if what you were gonna continue with is related to that, if it is, my apologies.
Uh, one, one of the items is, but it's a little ways down the list. Uh, it's, it's as good a time as any to have this discussion, so let's go.
Certainly.
Mr. Mayor, would you like me to go ahead?
Go ahead, Chief, yeah, if you wanna start it off, and I can jump in.
Okay, uh, given the, the constraints this year, the special situation that we're in, um, given the pandemic, uh, also taking into account that the hiring of our forty-eighth officer, if we did that next year, would involve someone who would need to go to the academy beginning in March, and his presence would not be felt from a manpower standpoint until November, probably, late October, November. Um, we would not see in terms of preventing overtime, much help from a forty-eighth officer next year, given those realities. Uh, however, the removal of that position from the budget would free up fifty-two thousand in salary, twelve thousand five hundred in health insurance, and five hundred in FICA, uh, for a total of sixty-five thousand plus. That, that amount, um, if eliminated from our budget, would free up, uh, with council's approval, thirty thousand to be returned, fifteen in overtime and fifteen in comp time, and would then enable us to continue to assign those two very important officers to the, like, Comby County NEU, um, or at least have enough overtime money in there. Um, keep in mind, we do have two new officers who just returned from the academy. We just, uh, or you just voted to hire a third one who can go right on the street. So we have three more people than we did a few months ago, um, to count as manpower. Um, we also have the ability to return another from a special assignment if necessary. So those are four more people, certainly three, if not four. Leaving these two over there, uh, is extremely important to us, the reduction of violent crime and drug crime. Um, we believe the elimination of this position this year, um, from forty-eight to forty-seven, given the realities, would be, uh, the best thing to do under the circumstances. And it would also, uh, after, uh, the thirty thousand is returned, fifteen in each, you would still have, uh, thirty-five thousand or so in savings left. So we think it's a great idea, and, uh, we welcome any questions on that.
Um, I just.
Go ahead.
Uh, Chief Hagan, um, appreciate that. Um, uh, and it makes perfect sense the way you explained it with the, uh, the academy, and then the time that that officer would not really affect uh, anything, saving on overtime or anything like that. And, um, I, I, this, this is an unusual year, an unusual budget, and I think that's a a good stopgap measure, and it, it will solve the problem for, for next year, I think. Um, we're, we're still gonna have work to do, because this issue will come up in next year's budget then, with these same two officers. So, uh, you know, we need to have, uh, we talked about peeking outside the box, or, or maybe talking with, uh, the county, and, uh, and collaborating with them, um, to come up with ways to fund those officers on an ongoing basis. Uh, they can be repeated year over year. And, uh, this gives us, I, I look, this is giving us the opportunity to, to take this coming year to do that, and I'd like to see that. Mr. Yoder?
Uh, yeah, no, I, I would, um, I would echo those sentiments. I appreciate the idea, and, um, I think it's a, it's a solid idea. Um, I just wanted to clarify, so, we're gonna save, um, we're gonna save sixty-five thousand dollars, and it sounds like you're proposing to keep thirty of those savings for the N, and, um, the NEU, um, and then put thirty-five thousand towards the bottom line. What would the, what, what would the thirty thousand you're proposing to keep, um, go towards?
I believe in the last budget session, uh, and, correct me if I'm wrong, I believe Mr. Banks made a motion, and it was passed to reduce, uh, police overtime by fifteen, and I think comp time by fifteen as well, for a total of thirty. The question was asked of me then, um, what is the estimate, uh, if those two were returned? Um, members of council believe that we couldn't afford to support the task forces. Um, this particular task force, we believe, is important enough to give up a position on the police department to continue support, um, if necessary, and, and that's what it's come to here. So we would ask that, if that was the case, if it was fifteen in each, that that amount would be returned to the, uh, to each of those line items, um, so that we could continue, uh, to have enough overtime money in the budget. Uh, and again, this overtime that we're asking to put back in and comp time is what, what we pay out for, uh, manpower overtime on patrol, because those guys are over there. Um, you know, we don't believe it will be as much next year, given the new people that we have, and, uh, the fact that if we brought them back, they would all be on the same shift, probably. But it still would, would be significant. We're asking that it be returned, um, and, uh, and we're willing to do this in order to keep those operations going.
Thank you, Chief.
Mr. Banks?
Well, just to clarify, we took twenty from overtime and fifteen from comp time. It wasn't fifteen and fifteen.
My, my mistake, then it would be thirty-five returned and thirty to the bottom line, sir.
Sure, slaughter. And also, um, you know, I think Chief Killian, um, alluded to it as well, uh, uh, last week's meeting, we do, and then we will continue to keep a pause on this overtime, and we, at any moment, um, are able to, uh, bring those two, um, any special assignments, for that matter, um, back. So if we do see a spike, um, in overtime or comp time, um, we have the ability to bring back any special assignments, um, which we would do that. Um, so it is, it, you know, we do keep a pause um, on overtime, and it's always our goal to reduce it. Um, clearly, uh, you can't determine how many fires or, or accidents you're going to have that are gonna create overtime, but it's always our goal to reduce that. So, um, as it pertains, though, um, to this specific case, we, we do have the ability to bring special assignments back. So if we, we're not, you know, our proposal is not to put it, just to, um, to eat up that overtime. So if it does start to spike, it'll, it'll come back.
Thank you, Mr. Banks.
Chief, you mentioned with the academy that, um, this officer wouldn't, the forty-eighth officer wouldn't start until November. Um, then why is it that we had factored, and maybe we haven't, but why is it that we factored an entire year's salary in for that individual? I think it's fifty-two, five, twenty-four?
Uh, yes, sir, um, the full amount is budgeted, and then we plan to use half of it to pay for the academy during the time that they're in the academy. Um, while they're a cadet, they make one half of a first-year officer's salary for those months in the academy. The other amount is budgeted, or is part of the salary is used to pay the academy. And then the minute that they graduate from the academy and, and appear here for f- full duty, their salary then is increased to the, the full first-year amount.
So just to make sure we got these amendments right, it would be fifty-two, five, twenty-four from salaries. Uh, uh, twelve thousand five hundred from health insurance and, and five hundred from FICA, correct?
According to Mr. Pavlock, yes, those are, those are the numbers, just.
Joe Pavlock, can you verify, is that, is that accurate?
That, that's correct.
Okay. Um, then I guess I'll go ahead and, and get started, um.
Hey, Mr. Banks, Dave, can I jump in for a sec? Um, the, the one idea that I wanted to suggest, and this might be something that we wanna just blow out of the water right away, um, was potentially reducing more or less half of the cost of that position with the idea that we would reopen the question, so, so reducing about thirty-five thousand dollars worth of the cost of that position, with the idea that we could reopen discussions about a thirty, about a forty-eighth officer, um, after midsummer, say sometime in August. Um, in case it happened to be a fortuitous time to hire. It would, it would give us a little bit more flexibility, I think, than, than letting that money drop to the bottom line. Um, I, I don't know how anyone else feels about that. Uh, so I wanted to put it out there.
You're saying in the case that there's some sort of, you know, something, God forbid, something bad happens to one of our officers or something like that, that we need to, to fill that?
Well, if something bad happens to one of our officers, I think we probably can just, uh, be, uh, if we would lose an employee for some reason, we would, we could hire another. Um, but, uh, I, I- But I, I don't know if, if a new hire becomes available, if we decide that we would like to move forward with a forty-eighth hire, that we're going to budget a forty-eighth hire in the twenty, twenty-two budget, and we'd like to move forward with that forty-eighth hire prior to the beginning of twenty-twenty-two, something like that. It may also be that that is absolutely not something that we want to contemplate. And, you know, of course, we will authorize the hire, so it wouldn't matter. But, but that would leave the, the funds in the salary line item in case we should choose to do a mid-year hire. And I, and I'm not saying that that's necessarily the way that we want to go. But, but I just wanted to put that out there as a possibility in case that appealed to anyone. We are looking to, to re, to restore thirty-five thousand dollars to the police overtime budget. We could do that with about half of the total salary and benefits numbers from the, from the first time, the, the, the entry-level police salary line.
I think it's a fair suggestion. If you want to put it forward.
I, I'm happy to. I, I was actually just looking to, to hear, does anybody have any objections for that or any thoughts about why that's a horrible idea? I'll admit that I haven't had a lot of time to think about it, so it was just kind of a proposal as, you know, as something else we might consider.
Yeah, fair point, Liz. I'd prefer to see it go to the bottom line personally. I think every little bit's going to help. That's just my opinion. As one of seven.
Okay. I'm, I'm really fine with either motion, so I'd, I'd welcome either one, Dave. Just wanted to put it out there.
Yeah, I, I would prefer that it gets dropped at the bottom line as well, but
Okay, let's do that.
You know, if, if we've committed to this course, I think it's, you know, we'll just say forty-seven for twenty-twenty-one.
Okay.
And I'll agree with them also that it should go to the bottom line.
Sounds good. Then, Dave, you want to move on those motions?
Yes. So, line on page forty-nine, Q four, four, zero, five, one, zero, one, zero, and reduce that by fifty-two thousand, five hundred and twenty-four.
I'll second.
There's a motion in second. We've had quite a bit of discussion there anymore. Hearing Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks. Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Mr. Banks.
We'll keep rolling if that's all right with you.
Yes.
Okay. I would like to make an amendment to line two, four, four, zero, five, two, zero, nine, zero. That's a health insurance. And to reduce that by twelve thousand, five hundred dollars.
I'll second.
There's a motion in second. Any discussion on that? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on that motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes seven oh.
All right, then to finish the reductions out, I'd like to propose an amendment to line two, four, four, zero, five, two, zero, one, zero. The FICA, and I'd like to reduce it by five hundred dollars.
Second.
There's a motion in second. I don't see any discussion. Mr. Frank on the motion, please. Oh, I'm sorry. Ms. Mealy?
Well, just one question. Mr. Pavla, it looks as though we're lined up to increase FICA by a thousand dollars elsewhere. So could we make a motion to increase that by a total of five hundred instead?
I, no, we, we need to, we'd have to increase it fifteen hundred to make, to make the full change.
Oh, okay. I thought we were decreasing by five hundred at this point.
I'm sorry. You're, you're correct. You're correct.
Okay. So, Mr. Banks, could I possibly ask you to amend your motion to increasing FICA by five hundred dollars to seventy thousand, five hundred dollars?
Yes, I'd like to amend the motion to, is it?
Increase.
Increase FICA by, you said fifteen hundred dollars?
Five hundred dollars to seven thousand, seventy thousand, five hundred.
I understand. Yes, it's thirty thousand, five hundred dollars. So increase it to by five hundred dollars.
Second.
Okay, motion to amend. Is there?
Second.
Okay. Second to amend. Mrs. Frank on the motion to amend, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Ms. Rouse.
Yes, motion to amend passes seven zero. So let's have the vote on the motion then.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, the amended motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And thank you, Mr. Banks. Or Ms. Mealy, or Mr. Banks. Mr. Banks, more?
I, I will keep going on this, just to finish this out. So I would like to increase, propose an amendment to increase line item two, four, four, zero, five, one, zero, four, zero. That's the police overtime by twenty thousand dollars to a total of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Increase police overtime by twenty thousand. Is there discussion from council? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Mr. Banks.
Okay, last one here for this page. I'd like to make an amendment to line two, four, four, zero, five, one, zero, five, zero. That's the comp time to increase it by fifteen thousand dollars to a total of one hundred and eighty thousand dollars.
Second.
There's a motion in the second. Increase comp time by fifteen thousand dollars to one hundred and eighty-five. Is there? Mr. Banks.
Just before we're off this, I just want to thank the chief and the mayor for bringing this forward. It was a good compromise, so thank you.
Yes, and thank you all for your work. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I, yeah, President Allison, I would just like to second that thought. Dave beat me to it. This is, is what compromise looks like, and I really appreciate this idea. I believe, actually, I was the one that made the motion to cut that overtime and comp time. I'm not going to let Dave take the rap for that, so. I am glad to see us putting it back in though, because this work by these two officers is very important. And I'm glad to see that we're not going to be losing, losing these officers in this unit.
Well said, Mr. Mackey, and making a budget, like they say, is any kind of legislation is like making sausage. You don't want to see the process, but you're, you're happy with the results and everybody likes it. So there's no, there's no wrong answers here. We're, we're making sausage and hopefully we come up with something everybody's going to enjoy. Okay. Any other comments on this? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank will have the vote, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
But.
Mrs. Katz.
I'm sorry, I couldn't get it unmuted. Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Lit, Ms. Mealy.
Yep, Janice, thanks.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah, we know each other well enough now. Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. And thank you, Mr. Banks. Job well done, sir. And administration. Okay. What do we have left?
Just a handful of things, I think, Randy, in terms of requested small changes by the administration, just to clean up some stuff. Is it okay if I start moving forward with this?
Yes, you're ready to.
All right. So I'd like to make a motion on page thirty-five in the general fund, line two, three, two, zero, seven, one, zero, zero, contract services. Like to decrease that line from forty thousand dollars to thirty thousand dollars. That's more or less a make-good on some other slightly inaccurate numbers that we'll be replacing, that we'll be changing moving forward.
That was line two, three, two, zero, seven, nine, one, zero.
Seven, yes, yes, seven, nine, one, zero, zero.
I'll second that.
Now, there's a motion in the second. Discussion on that, counsel. Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank and Ms. Mealy. Next up.
Okay, next up, page forty-nine in the general fund. This is in the police department under non-uniform salaries, line two, four, four, zero, five, one, zero, eight, zero. And please, folks, my vision's not that great, so if I get the numbers wrong, somebody jump me and correct me. Going to increase that line from eighty-six thousand, six, fourteen to ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars. Mr. Oh, okay, nevermind. Yep. To ninety-seven thousand, seven hundred and eighty-four dollars.
I'll second that.
There's a motion in second. Is there a discussion on that one? Hearing and seeing none, Mr. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Okay, next motion. All right. Oh, we took care of FICA already. Thank you, Dave. Okay. On page twenty-six in the general fund, under trash removal, we realized some savings on our trash removal contract. So we're going to decrease that line item. The line is two, two, seven, zero, seven, nine, zero, six, zero. Decrease that line from forty-five thousand to forty thousand.
Second that.
Motion in second, to decrease trash removal from forty-five to forty. Is there discussion from anyone? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on that motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz. Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Bonnie, did you? You were muted. Now, there's, yes, okay. Motion passes seven oh. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Ms. Mealy.
Okay, the final item, I believe, unless anyone knows is something that I don't. There's a motion is related to page thirty-four in the general fund. This is, once again, a contract services line item, line two, three, one, zero, seven, six, zero, six, zero. I'd like to decrease that line from ten thousand dollars to zero.
Zero. There's a motion, there's a motion in the second. Questions from council. Mr. Banks.
Just one here. What was this intended to be used for?
This was for our bi-annual OPEB valuation. But that won't occur till, or it's going to, we'll encumber the funds from twenty-twenty-one. So it's just a valuation that happens periodically. We'll encumber the funds from twenty-twenty-one and then just won't have anything else for any.
Thank you.
Contracted service.
More of your comments, but on the motion, please, Mrs. Frank.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
I apologize for my mute not working half the time here, but yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes, motion passes seven zero. Thank you, Mrs. Frank, and thank you, Ms. Mealy. What was that?
Just cleaning up, Randy.
A value, yes. Appreciate that. So, Mr. Pavla, where does that leave us right now? In relation to our goal.
The bottom line, leaving taxes as they stand is one million, twenty-eight thousand, seven hundred, forty-eight. And to reduce one mil of taxes is eight, seventy-two, five, forty.
Which would leave us then, Joe, with about a hundred and twenty-five thousand in the bottom line?
No, because there's been an additional change. It wasn't on my proposal. It's a one fifty-six.
So one six, yeah, one fifty-six, got it. All right. The news just gets better and better, kind of.
So, that's where we're at, counsel. Did everybody get what he just said? So we, we have a decision to make. So let's have some discussion on where we want to end up. Mr. Pelizzi.
Thank you, Mr. Allison. So real quick, given all, and Mr. Pavla, I know I'm probably putting you on the spot to see how good your quick math is. I apologize. But given all the changes that we've made, where does that put our, what, what the proposed millage increase would be?
We were at one, five, seven, two. So that would be at one, six, two, two. I'm correct. For a tax millage, a half mil of tax increase.
I'm sorry, I, I probably didn't present my question clearly enough. With these changes, what would our total millage increase be, be then with this new proposed budget in this format?
It'd be a one-half mil tax increase.
Questions or comment? Mr. Yoder.
We got a half-mil tax increase facing us, which is about, what, four hundred and fifty thousand dollars?
Roughly, yeah. Four thirty-four.
Okay. Um, I, I for one would like to see us go further. I'm just going to throw that out there. There were a handful of things I know that we, in addition to what the mayor brought forward, which again, thank you. I, I appreciate that effort. There were a handful of things I think the administration was looking into. I know it's only been a week. We've been having these discussions for a couple of weeks. I didn't know if there was any progress on any of those items. You know, we were talking about contracting out. Uh, I didn't know if there was any progress on, um, any of those items. You know, we've talked about contracting out, um, a couple of potential services that support City Hall. Um, you know, there was talk of the recreation, um, department. There was talk of a number of other things. Um, I, I know it's been a short time, but we don't have a lot of time, so I didn't know if there was any additional insight into those items that could be helpful for those efforts.
We have, we've looked into a few, um, and really what we got back was, um, the savings. You know, if you contract out, the savings are nominal, if any, um, depending what we're trying to get, um, what I spoke, uh, to a few people about would be the hourly, how many hours you get, I guess, if it's contracted out. So, uh, you know, if we have a, an employee here, obviously we have them full-time, all day, every day. Uh, if it's a contracted out, um, is it twice a week? Is it three days a week? What do you, what do you give for that, uh, money? So we've looked into some of this. Um, it's not looking as though the savings would really be that great, um, and you may not get, um, anywhere near the same number of hours, um, that you're getting. Um, I know Councilman Banks and I spoke, uh, about engineering, uh, the other day, and, uh, that was one of the areas, uh, same with IT, uh, Chris Cooley and I, uh, discussed that. We had a very similar conversation. They typically charge, uh, about twice what this, what the salary would be, uh, and you're not sure if you're, what the hours you would get. So, um, it would take a little bit more digging into, uh, for us. I know it was only a week. We tried, you know, we did the last, you know, last few weeks, as you said, we, we've started to call around and ask, but, uh, you know, it's still some more to be done, but I definitely, you know, we can continue to have these conversations as we move forward. My, my personal opinion right now is, is another area that we looked at, and I think I spoke with Council President Allison about this, uh, is when we're looking at the consultants, uh, having an in-house grant writer, uh, possibly, um, cutting what we have for consultant in half, bringing in-house grant writer part-time, which would give us, you know, roughly twenty hours or so a week, much more than you would normally get, and then using the other piece of that, uh, for consulting. So that's, that's an idea I'm throwing out to get council's input on as well. That's a possibility. Um, so there's a number of items that we could look at even here in the very beginning of the new year that could realize as some possible additional savings too. And, and bring some folks in-house that we would get more hours from, uh, potentially than otherwise. So, you know, there's still a lot of, there's still a lot of variables out there, uh, that would allow us to realize some savings, uh, and we're continuing to look into those. Mr. Pelisi.
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, those variables, eh, if we were pushed, how soon do you think we'd be able to get some clarity on, on, um, what those savings might be?
Uh, hopefully sooner rather than later, I'll say, uh, the other items, you know, we're, we're clearly working with, as you all are aware, PennDOT and FTA have said that before. Um, that's going to improve our systems greatly, uh, and that will probably allow us, uh, to realize some savings too. So, again, those items, we don't know yet. Um, there's also some other items that we're, we don't know yet. So hopefully, uh, I don't wanna speculate too much, but I would say hopefully soon after the new year. Some of, some of them are out of our control, uh, the, the, the PennDOT and FTA and, and others, um, but we'll hopefully get those very, very soon here and have those mechanisms in place, mechanisms in place.
Thank you, Mayor. The, um, the only real, the only reason I'd asked, um, is, you know, hypothetically, should the budget not pass tonight, we would have to go back to the table and make sure that we could rework a budget before January one, and if we couldn't, then my understanding is, and anybody feel free to jump in and correct me, at that point in time, the city would quote-unquote shut down. Until that time, January one, the city would continue to operate as normal with the current budget, right? It, it would be nice to see those additional savings, and that's why I had asked, like, how soon we might be able to see those savings, because the last thing that anybody would really want is to see the city go into quote-unquote a shutdown.
That is correct. Another, the other option as well, uh, councilman, is to, uh, hypothetically, again, if we, if you all pass the budget, um, once that comes, once they all come in, we can reopen. Um, so say we don't get them over the holidays, uh, with next week, uh, in the holiday season. If we don't have those, uh, prior to January one, uh, if the budget were to pass tonight, um, and then we get all of those items in, as soon as we get them, uh, obviously the administration will bring those to City Council. We have the option of reopening, uh, and looking at, once we have all of those accurate numbers, um, and coming back, um, and, and adjusting or amending, uh, any of these line items as council sees fit. Mr. Banks.
I'd just like to, uh, at this juncture, just remind all of us that if we're thinking about voting against the budget without even attempting to amend it down to the level that we're comfortable, comfortable with, that would be highly irresponsible of us. Um, it is our job to, this is on our desk now, so it is our job to get this thing to a place that we're comfortable with it. So, you know, if, if, if there are amendments to make, make them, we need to make them right now. So I just wanted to make sure that we are clear on that.
And just as soon as I have the information from the other agencies, I will get that to City Council's desk instantly. I can assure you of that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Mr. Allison.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes, I, you know, Councilman Banks, I don't think it would be irresponsible when we're still trying to figure out how we can amend some things. There are things still questionable as far as what the budget goes. This is a budget that, you know, we've been working on as council for at least three weeks, if not longer at this point. And it's been a daily process of how are we going to, uh, make sure we are not going to strap our taxpayers at this point. Um, we've brought it down to a, a half a mil, and, and that in itself is still money that I hear some people is gonna be, uh, hard for them to even deal with, as far as, some people can't even understand that. But this year, um, with so many people in precarious positions, not working, um, not bringing in an income, uh, it's, it's very difficult for some of our taxpayers. Um, I just don't, you know, you, you were questioning a lot of things. Now, as far as looking at what, what we can outsource, uh, Mayor, I, I hope you look at this diligently from the standpoint of some of the offices, uh, departments. You brought up the engineer. An engineer is vitally important to our city. Um, this is a, that's one, one employee that we know the problems we incurred when we didn't have one that was qualified. Uh, especially with everything that's going on with the levy, uh, gravious run in so many different areas. That's a position that you cannot outsource. This is someone has, who has to work within the city administration. There are other areas that maybe we can look at, and that would be, um, IT for some, you know, we more or less have done a lot with that IT in City Hall this year. Um, because our IT person was over at RVT. Um, so therefore maybe that can be outsourced. Um, the rec department, that's another area that we can look at as far as what we can do in other areas with that. Uh, when we say, um, you're not only looking at salaries, you're looking at the, the, uh, legacy, and when I say legacy, your health insurance and all the other expenses that go along with those salaries. Let's not be foolish in what we want to, uh, pull away from the city government, um, and let's be smart about it. Um, you said, let's bring in a grant writer for maybe twenty hours a week. Uh, I'm looking at Chief Killian and, and Chief Hagan, who have done a lot of their own grant writing, and so has, uh, other departments. We have, uh, Skip Mimi at this point, who is, uh, uh, qualified to do things like that. I think that would be foolish to bring somebody in with, uh, for that, that purpose. As far as lobbyists goes, lobbyists are entirely different than grant writers. They're the ones that sit in the offices of, of the legislators trying to beg for the money that the cities need. It's an entirely different, uh, element that you're looking at. So I, you know, let's run our city smarter and smoother, and, you know, let's not just sit here and at the last minute trying to make these cuts and, and trying to come up with different ways to run things. Um, let's do this starting January first as far as how we're going to, um, run our city lean and mean next year, because, you know, we're, we're talking, uh, problems that we're having with this budget. Trust me, you know as well as I do, next year is gonna be worse, uh, without, you know, some of the income that's not gonna be coming in. Um, we've gotta have somebody out there fighting for us to try and bring money into the city to help cover some of the expenses. And you know as well as I do what might happen with, uh, RVT. So therefore, you have, we have to be so careful for next year. Um, and this year, even, you know, uh, a half a mil can be very hurtful to some, some of our citizens. So let's think about this, okay? And you're right, it can be amended come January. If we voted yes to this, we still can amend it, and I do understand that factor, but I still have to put our taxpayers first.
Um, I, can I just piggyback on, um, what you just mentioned, uh, Councilwoman Katz? We, we are down to half a mil, and I think I, I heard you say we should be careful about what we changed and, and need to do, our due diligence in researching that, because we don't wanna go cutting just because we're trying to get to a certain point. And, and I agree with that. I, I think the things that we're asking the mayor to look at within a couple of weeks, to me are things that really are gonna take a reason, a reasonable amount of time beyond that to really do the kinds of things you, you were referencing, um, Bonnie, um, you know, what function does this department play? What function does that department play? And then balancing that against, uh, if, if we go to a consultant or go to contracting, um, uh, what's that cost going to be? Because, uh, every, there's, there's a lot of moving parts there. Um, what, can we get somebody that's familiar with how city government runs, or how do we work all of that? I think it's gonna take, uh, more time than a few weeks to really hit the nail on the head there. And then the other thing that I would like to know in relation to that is, okay, we're at a half a mil now. Where exactly do we wanna get the, the consensus is to get? Is it a quarter of a mil? Is it, uh, a third of a mil? Is it zero? Um, we have to have a hard target. Otherwise, uh, we'll have a hard time identifying what we need to do to get there. So tho- those are my concerns and thoughts right now, uh, as we go forward. Um, I'm sorry, Mayor, sorry.
No, I didn't wanna, are you, are you finished, Council President?
Yes.
Okay, no, I, I just wanted to be clear a, as it pertains to John Sander, engineer, uh, I by no means want to outsource, uh, the engineer. Uh, it was, uh, had been brought up at one of the council sessions when we were talking about the various departments, and it just happened to be, uh, Councilman Banks and I had, had spoke about it briefly, but not by any means, uh, of, uh, from my point of view, uh, to, uh, get rid of John Sander. I hired him on and council, you know, we hired him on, uh, you know, earlier this year, and he's done an absolutely tremendous job, uh, with all of the projects, and I thousand percent, uh, want him to stay, and I would never propose, uh, getting rid of him or outsourcing that position. I think what he is doing is, is, uh, is fantastic. So I wanna, I wanna clear up that point, uh, and make sure that, um, that wasn't, uh, misunderstood. Um, and secondly, I absolutely would do be, uh, do my due diligence, uh, as Councilwoman Katz mentioned. Uh, we will make sure that everything, uh, that we look into and that the administration has been asked, look into, that we are diligent in that process and bring accurate numbers back, uh, to City Council. So I want to be clear, um, I'm not suggesting by any means, that what John Sander, our engineer is doing, um, you know, is not appreciated. He very much so, and, uh, I would actually go to bat for him the other way. If council considered outsourcing engineering, I would, uh, actually, um, strongly disagree with that. So just wanted to clear that up. Thanks.
I'm, I'm happy to hear that, Mayor.
Mr. Winder.
Yeah, if I can just, um, voice my opinion real quick. John Sanders phenomenal. I have been through as management two other engineers. Um, John Sanders by far knocks it out of the park. Um, I would not give John Sander for anything. Um, I'd give my salary before I'd let you guys cut his. Um, the other one that I heard come up before was, um, human resources, and I guess the point I wanna make is, um, that I was here when we outsourced human resources before. It was a nightmare for the employees. I'll use my department, RVT, fire, police, and Jo Ellen, the other night when I had an employee issue, I called her at six-thirty at night when she was technically out, off of her normal working time. She answered the phone. We talked for about an hour. We resolved the issue. The employees work around the clock. You need somebody that will be there. I know Jo Ellen has gone to the fire department, police department, second shift, third shift, first shift, doesn't matter. She's always made herself available. And I think it's the key point to make is this administration, it doesn't matter what time it is, I could call Chief Hagan, I could call Chief Killian, I could call Jo Ellen, I could call the mayor at three, four in the morning. It doesn't matter. I mean, through this snowstorm, we've all come together, through different events, we've all come together, worked very hard together. To outsource certain things, I think is just my personal opinion, wrong for the employees as well as the city itself. Um, because you need these people that are devoted to the city, not to five other companies. I mean, if, if you guys really wanna make some cuts, I'll offer up fifty-five thousand right now in the streets departments, um, equipment line item. You can cut that. It will definitely hinder the process for the electrician with the equipment we were gonna buy there. We'll wait another year. We've made it this far. We'll make it even longer. If you want the administration to look through, I'll go through and pick apart my budget line by line. If that's what you guys really want. I mean, I'm here to help do whatever. I don't wanna see certain departments get outsourced, so if the streets department has to be affected in some fashion to make that happen, I'm glad. Thank you.
Uh, President Allison?
Yes.
Would you mind if I said something for a second?
Go ahead, no.
Um, personally, I, I'm with, I'm with everyone on council, but I would prefer to see this year be a zero tax increase here. None of us, um, none, none of us on council, none of us in the administration want to see us raise taxes, especially in a difficult budget year. Um, however, I would suggest that we have, uh, over the course of my time on council, over the last twelve years, but a number of years passed when we had an opportunity to give ourselves, thi- this isn't an opportunity to give ourselves flexibility on the bottom line. This is a matter to me of necessity, but we do not want to cut our budget so closely that, um, that, that, that God forbid something un, unforeseen would happen, we wouldn't have money to transfer into a line to meet expenditures. And that, I think, is what we will be talking about doing, if we were to try and reduce the tax increase to zero and keep the tax, the taxes exactly the same as last year. Um, I, I cannot stress the extent to which I feel as though that would be an exceptionally unwise idea on our part. We have, we have succeeded in reducing the tax increase by, uh, one-point-seven-five mils. Um, that's, that's a, it's a huge accomplishment. Um, we have, we have outlined further opportunities for potential savings moving forward with the administration, and we have And we have committed to working with the administration to realize those savings. If we realize those savings, that money falls to the bottom line. It doesn't matter whether or not we've taken it out of this budget, it's gonna be there for us. Um, so we, uh, to me, I think we need to move forward with the, with the idea that, that with, with the next um, item that we look at, we will, we will, it, we will include a tax increase of a half a mil. It is, it is a hard ask, it is not an ask that I am proud to make, it is not an ask that I want to make. But I feel as though this is the best option for the services the city provides to our citizens, for the citizens of the city of Williamport. Um, and, and for keeping, um, for making certain that Mr. Pavlock doesn't die of a heart attack before the end of twenty twenty-one, for crying out loud, as we, uh, as, as we ask our finance department to perform miracles um, with money that's not there. Um, we, we, we need to keep the budget as lean and as tight as humanly possible, Miss Katz, I agree. Um, but I think that process, frankly, as, as we have all been saying in the course of this first year of Mr. Slaughter's administration budget process, that process looks like working on the budget beginning in January. That process looks like focusing on budget cuts, not just in November and December, but, but throughout the entire year, focusing on places that we can economize. Um, this in, in some ways is a lost year for us. The pandemic has, has scattered, that, that, a, a huge number of, of, of issues that were really far beyond the city's control have, have, have scattered some of our abilities to focus on budgetary issues this year. Um, and, and have made them even more difficult next year. But we need to make that a priority and we need to make it a priority every year moving forward until we have a plan for the city's budget. And we know where we're going and we know how we want to spend our money. Because really the reason, the reason for the city's financial situation is, is in part the, the constantly rising demands of personnel costs and healthcare. Um, and, and in part the fact that we have, in the course of my tenure on council, never succeeded in making an adequate plan with the administration for the financial position that we will find ourselves in ten years from now. And that is what is necessary to, to provide the city with a sound financial footing. So why don't we commit to doing that after we pass this year's budget? And commit to moving forward into a more solid financial future in twenty twenty-two. Thanks, Mr. uh, Mr. Allison.
Mr. Allison? I would, I would like to um, say I agree with Liz. You know, every, every year that we do the budget, we're given this budget in November and we're all scrambling. And I, I think what we would all like to see is we would like to see a five-year plan laid out. So come November, we're not all sitting here scratching our heads, trying to figure out how we're gonna save money and cut wherever we can. Um, this is something, again, that I think we really do want to see the administration do, starting January. There are so many different areas, maybe we have to start looking at different areas. And I do have to agree with Joe Pavlock, we can, Liz Neely, we cannot uh, cut things down to the bone where we are strapped and, and things cannot run smoothly. There's such a, there's such a point of being foolish in what we do with, with our, with the government. And, but on the other hand, we have to be careful because we are using other people's money to uh, finance what's going on in our city. And we do have to be careful how we do this, we have to look out for the benefit of others. So I'm asking you, Mayor and the administration, to please start putting a plan together for five years that we can start working on things. Uh, please start in January to start working on how we can do things run smoother and cleaner and more financially stable. I don't know how we can do that, but I think if we all put our heads together, um, maybe we can all come up with something different. Uh, instead of scrambling at the last minute, uh, trying to do this the eve of Christmas is very hard mentally and physically for all of us. And we've been doing this for how many weeks at this point? And I don't want to see us going through another year of this, I really don't. Um, it is kind of, it's hard, but it's also ludicrous to be putting us physically and mentally through this. Every department, every council member, we're all going through this and I think we're all getting tired. I think I've said my
We all agree with that, Mrs. Katz. And could I just jump in on that for a second? I'll go to Mayor Slaughter. Um, I think, and I'm gonna sound like a broken record, but what, and I'm sure everybody feels the same way on this, but whatever plan we come up isn't just for running a tight ship. It's for how are we gonna grow our revenue outside of, of real estate tax? And I think that's a, a big part of the equation. Mayor Slaughter?
I just wanted to follow up real quick, I agree with all of that. Um, and actually, uh, Council President Allison and I had a meeting very early this year with DCD to actually start to have the talks of a uh, five-year strategic plan. Um, I, I forget, I think it was at January, February, I don't remember. Uh, it was prior to the pandemic. Um, and we had every intentions of that this year. Uh, and of course, the state and federal budgets, um, you know, are out of whack, just like everywhere else across the country. So we've already, we, we've begun the engagement with DCD, um, and their strategic planning process. And we're hopeful that in uh, twenty twenty-one here, uh, we'll be able to continue that and, and get definitely a plan in place. So I agree with you, we've already started it and hopefully that will come to fruition very soon.
Thank you, Mr. Slaughter. Uh, Chief Hagan? You're muted, Chief Hagan?
Very briefly, uh, with regard to IT, as you can imagine, uh, the Bureau of Police in particular has uh, and really the Department of Public Safety, but especially the police, uh, with the confidential information that we handle has special needs with regard to IT that go far beyond the normal uh, sort of IT stuff that regular government units need. It is an intimate relationship that we have with our IT person. And that extends beyond uh, the current IT, back to the prior guy as well. There are direct uh, conversations uh, with Spillman and, and other companies. Uh, there's planning and there are specific needs, emergency and otherwise that come up that uh, that make it, uh, I, I think that go beyond what would be uh, uh, realistic for a contract worker. So I would ask that you keep that in mind. Um, with regard to the grant writer, I, I wanna thank uh, uh, Councilwoman Katz for the compliments on the grant writing. Um, and, and it is true, especially our fire chief is an extraordinary, extraordinary talent when it comes to grant writing. But the simple fact of the matter is, we are responsible for running bureaus and departments. And so we are part timers at best, amateurs at this. And so the, the idea being, it is a leap of faith, but you pay twenty or fifty or, or whatever for a part-time or full-time fif- twenty, fifty thousand, part-time, full-time grant writer. But then you see possibly six or seven figures in revenue per year because of that, because they can dedicate more time to it. I know this is what the mayor uh, meant, uh, even without asking him. The idea is that you would have a huge return on that small investment. Um, I, I think the county has seen a return like that, uh, with the same sort of investment over the past several years. And I think, I think we could as well, but it would be a leap of faith, it would, there would be a trial period. It's just that the, the chiefs, myself and Mark and, and others only have so much time to do that. And then we have to do a lot of other things. And to have somebody who could do that all the time, could be in this, in the, in this time of financial constraint, might just be the answer in an effort to, to find new revenue that we just aren't being able to find right now.
Chief Killian?
Yeah, just to uh, 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 again, reemphasize Chief Hagan's point. Um, yeah, we've, we have been successful in some past years uh, with the grant processes. And quite frankly, writing the grants are the easy part, managing the grants oftentimes are the difficult part. Uh, and we spend a, an inordinate amount of time managing grants um, from a financial standpoint with uh, Mr. Pavlock and such. Um, to exactly what Chief Hagan said, you know, we have departments to run also. And, and as I enjoy grant writing, um, it, it becomes a huge time commitment, specifically with a lot of the stipulations on the federal grants and such. Um, and, and quite frankly, it is almost a full-time job trying to keep up with the uh, with the constant updates and new requirements and so forth, uh, from the grant standpoint. So I would agree with uh, with Chief Hagan wholeheartedly and uh, you know, uh, obviously, from the administration standpoint, the intention there would be to, to realize those savings or to realize uh, savings in, in actual hire and, you know, make that money back in, in from a grant funding standpoint. You know, and again, uh, my expertise per se, and I wouldn't even call it expertise, but you know, my forte is, is fire department grant writing. Chief Higgins is police department grant writing. It's uh, you know, our expertise i- is not in many of the other avenues of uh, of, you know, city government. So um, just some food for thought uh, regarding that. But uh, the time commitment is tremendous and, and trying to balance that a- and run a department as well. Uh, and everything that comes along with that can be uh, can be quite challenging. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief Killian. Uh, other? Uh, Mr. Banks?
If I could just um, support what the chief was saying, oh, well, what Chief Hagan was saying about IT. Um, that conversation actually started, um, I think with you and I, President Allison. Um, and uh, over the past couple of weeks, I've gotten more, I've had some more time talking with Mr. Cooley about all the avenues that he's involved with in the city. And I would say if he's not, it's not just IT, it's just technology in general. Um, so outsourcing for maybe someone to handle help desk tickets would cover such a small amount um, of what's actually done by our information technology director, that department. So it's, it's a good value for what we have.
Thank you, Mr. Banks. Um, other comments on this particular? Uh, Mr. Mackey?
Uh, thank you. I, I know it's getting late and I don't know what else there is really to say. Um, but I will fifth the notion that we need to start this process earlier. Because what I'm hearing is that maybe there are other areas that we can, could save. We just don't have the time to figure it out, right? It's, it's December seventeenth. Um, and, and to figure these things out in the next uh, fourteen days would be unrealistic. Um, so that leaves us with, with this decision to, to, to approve this budget or to delay it what, another week and have it come back and look exactly the same? Or maybe delay it ten days and have it come back and look the same? And then at that point, now we're voting on the budget that sits before us right now. Or we would essentially be voting to shut the city down. Um, and I've heard a lot about, you know, what is in the best interest of the residents of Williamsport. Um, and again, I'll second what Councilwoman Neely said, I don't think any of us want to raise taxes. We're all taxpayers here, I don't want my taxes to go up. But this is, for me, we have two options here, uh, pass this budget or I guess shut the city down. And, and I don't know, maybe Norm, could you, and may, I don't know who's the best to answer this question, what does that look like exactly? I, I, I've heard that now a couple of times, the city shutting down, city government shutting down. What exactly does that look like? And I, that's, that's an actual question I would like answered, I think it's important for the, for the, for the, what the residents of Williamsport to hear what that means.
Okay, what it means is it, it, this is Norm Lubin. Uh, what it means is that after Janu- after December thirty-first, there's no authorization to spend any money. Um, the one case that went to the Commonwealth Court on that issue, the court was very emphatic on it. That the power to, or authorization to spend money, um, doesn't exist. The reason it got to the court was the uh, mayor and council asked the um, the police department to work, you know, without being paid until they get a budget passed. Uh, the um, police department said no, so they had to lay off the entire police department. And, um,
And I'm assuming the same would go for the fire department?
Same for any department.
Right, so
You can't spend anything. So if we had uh, a snowstorm like this on January first, um, there's no authority to expend any money.
Yeah, so I mean, again, I, I think what, what I'm trying to say is, you know, I, I guess, I, I'm supporting this budget. I mean, a half a mil is, is not ideal. Um, but when you consider the alternative, uh, I, I, I just, you know, it, 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 that, that to me seems very irresponsible, so, you know, that, that's all I have to say.
Um, other comments or questions? The, Mr. Lizzie?
It's okay if Mr. Lubin wanted to, um, it sounded like he wanted to say something further.
Well, the only thing, yeah, the only thing I'd point out is that under the third class city code, uh, there is a provision for reopening the budget in January. And um, basically, but it has to be done by February fifteenth. And there's some um, notice requirements of publishing it in the paper. Um, ten days of public inspection, things like that, but it can be done.
Okay.
But it has to be done in the month of January, though.
And so I would like to ask uh, Mr. Grimes? You're the one who uh, actually sends the tax bills out. So um, what, how does that affect your timeline?
Um, we have to certify with the county actually next week, um, the tax rate. However, for real estate tax bills, if you would change the millage rate um, by February fifteenth, that's about the latest. Our, our bills usually around that time are when they're, they're all produced to be mailed. So um, if the millage rate would change February fifteenth, hopefully about a week earlier than that, we could, we could get it adjusted on the tax bills. Um, we would just have to see what, what we would need to change with that certification process with the county. I imagine we can just tell them, you know, here's our, our new tax rate, but I'm not a hundred percent positive on it.
Okay, um, that gives us some, that, that, this is uh, useful information, I'd say, that we just heard from our solicitor and our treasurer. Did you have something else to say, Mr. Lubin?
No, it's just section eleven, eight, ten, in case anybody wants to check it out or look for the more details that are in the provision.
Okay. Um, and just for uh, reference sake, um, like I said, uh, we're talking about getting it lower, but we, we don't have a hard target. I mean, we, some people may, but uh, as a consensus, uh, so if, if we wanted to get it down to uh, a half, a quarter of a mil, we'd have to find um, two hundred seventeen thousand dollars more cuts. Um, or, or some combination thereof. Mr. Cooley, can you add your hand up first?
Thank you, Mr. Allison. Um, you know, I will just be completely frank with everybody. Um, and with all of our residents, that's what I ask of people when they speak to me is just come out with it and be open and honest. And uh, to be that way with everybody else here, with the mayor, the administration, council, department heads. I came into tonight fully of the mindset that I was going to vote against this budget.
I'll look something up.
Firmly because of a tax increase placed upon our city's residents. Um, I didn't think was fair, especially when you consider everything that we've gone through this year. However, um, seeing how well our administration and our council worked just recently, in the past few very short weeks, to be able to find the cuts made to bring down the budget from what it was to what it currently is. Knowing that we can go into next year, working at this so much sooner. Um, I know a lot of us, some of us have some ideas and thoughts on other ways that we can try to bring increased revenue into the city. that we can try to bring increased revenue into the city without having to increase the tax burden on our residents. All things considered, I am going to vote to support this budget. I, you, you might even say that I, I, I'm inspired at how well our city is working together, at least from where I'm sitting. Um, Mayor, uh, it's, it's, uh, we all know that you were elected into a pretty tough spot. And it's been a pretty tough, uh, it's been a pretty tough year. You know, we are a majority of a freshman council. I think it's pretty safe to say that we've gone through an awful lot that, uh, a lot of past council members might not have ever gone through. So with all of that, and I will cut it short because we're after nine o'clock. I'm going to vote yes to this budget because I believe in how well we're working together. Um, I believe in what we'll be able to accomplish in this coming year. However, Mayor and everyone else, department heads, please know that in the upcoming budget presentations for years to come, I expect that after we've all gone through this, um, going into the next budget proposals, uh, I don't know if I'll be so understanding if a half a mil budget comes in front of me. But, um, like I said, I'm, I'm hopeful and I think that, um, with everyone as new as we are, as green as we are, that we can really do some incredible things for the future of our city. So all of you, thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Yoder.
Uh, yeah, I'll, um, I'll echo the sentiments of, uh, Mr. Pelizzi. Um, I was hoping that we can get to zero. Um, I think we still got a little bit more time. If we can reopen this in January, um, gives the administration some more time to look into some things um, that, that were brought up in our deliberations and discussion, some ideas that council threw to the administration. Um, I'm willing to vote for the budget to give the administration some more time to identify those things. Um, in hopes that we get it to zero. I've got a couple of other ideas, but, um, you know, they, they can hang in there until January. That's no problem. Um, and I'll echo what Mr. Pelizzi said as well. You know, I, uh, th- this has been an interesting process, at least from my perspective. Um, tonight specifically though, we've, we've done a lot of work together. That's great. Um, I think the seven of us, um, specifically have done a lot of heavy lifting in this. Um, and I appreciate the collaboration between everybody. Um, we've had a lot of ideas shared and what have you, and, and that's, um, inspiring and, um, and fruitful, very much so. Um, I very much hope that we are not here next year. Um, there's a lot that can be done to avoid that. Um, and that starts in January, very much so, like everybody has said, um, I will be here to help, um, that effort. Um, but, um, it's got to be led by the administration. So, um, I'm looking to the administration to lead that effort, um, so that we are not sitting here again, um, next year and repeating the same, um, craziness, uh, because it, at, long-term, it's not responsible. Um, so I'll look forward to helping you, Mayor Slaughter. Um, but, uh, so I'll be voting for the budget as well. Um, I will look forward to reopening this in January so we can get it to zero. Thanks.
Thanks, Eric. Um, well, I don't see any other comments from council members. Um, very heartfelt thoughts expressed by everyone. I, I think we all appreciate that, appreciate each other. Um, I'll second that, those thoughts, but, um, there was a lot to deal with and I think, uh, I'm very proud of our council members, my fellow colleagues. Um, it was, uh, it's been a great, a great year working together and, uh, we're not quite done, but we're, we're almost there. Um, so kudos there and thanks to the administration. Um, so that takes us back to our budget as it stands now. Uh, so our first matter will be, will be to, uh, vote on the ordinance as it stands at this point. Um, or, uh, that we've already opened up and brought off the table. So if we're all ready to vote, the cuts that we've made and the changes, um, apparently we are. Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion to adopt the, the operating budget passes 7-0. Thank you, Mrs. Frank.
Randy, this is such a hallmark moment. Want all of us to stop and appreciate the love in the room right now. The virtual room. Okay, sorry.
Combination of, uh, good feelings and exhaustion.
I think so too.
I don't know if you call it loveless. I don't know if you call it. It's, 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 it's tiring.
Yeah. I'm, I'm, I'm over myself now. I just had to put that out there. Um, thanks guys. I, I, it was, it was good to feel unanimous about that. So thank you.
Very good.
It was done with trepidation and promises.
Yeah. More than promises, I, I hear a commitment to, uh, to doing things, uh, differently, but organized and, um, intentionally, I think is, uh, what I hear voiced tonight. Not, we don't want things to just happen. Uh, we're going to be intentional about how they're going to happen. So that brings us to, uh, item four, uh, adopting. Would you read that in short form, please, Mrs. Frank?
An ordinance of the city of Williamsport, county of Lightcoming and the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, fixing the tax rate for all city purposes for year 2021 in final reading.
Uh, thank you, Mrs. Frank. Um, and we need to bring this off the table. So is there a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Uh, Mrs. Frank on the motion to bring this off the table.
Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Uh, it's back on the table for its final reading and vote. So, um, could you go over those numbers then, uh, Mr. Pavlock, for a half mil increase?
We're currently at 17,22. I think we're looking to bring it down to 16,22 or a one mil decrease.
A one mil decrease.
Yes. Which would amount to 872,540 dollars.
De- uh, decreasing the millage.
In, increasing the millage from last year, decreasing the millage from the proposed millage in the current ordinance.
Right.
To be totally clear. Right.
Yes. We're decreasing it a mil to leave us with a mil, a half mil increase from last year.
That is correct.
And that's with the option, uh, that we found out, uh, we have a timeline in the beginning of 2021 to open the budget and make further changes should we desire to do so and find the, uh, the means to do so.
Randy, if, can I say something? Uh, and this is for Norm. Norm, uh, didn't you tell me we have till, uh, February, what is it? February 15th or 18th?
15.
15. To pull this all together.
Yes.
It, it has to be passed by or adopted by February 15th at the latest.
Okay. Just wanted to clarify that.
Yeah.
Mr. Slaughter.
Very quick question for Norm as, as relates to process. Uh, if we reopen here, is that, uh, who initiates that?
Uh, the statute obviously is silent, like all Pennsylvania statutes. Um, it doesn't say, I, it really doesn't matter who, because obviously it's council's action. So it'll be at a council meeting where they would say, you know, there'd be a first motion to reopen, you know, a motion to reopen the budget. Um, what I was going to do is copy that statute and send it to everybody.
Thank you, Norm. We appreciate that. Mr. Pavlock?
Just from a timing standpoint, uh, that would be by ordinance. So would it require? I, I expected that would be by ordinance. So it would require two readings? Okay.
Yes, because you're, you're mending an existing ordinance.
Right.
So you're looking at probably, uh, I don't have the calendar in front of me, but, um, we meet on the 7th, 7th, 14th, meet the 21st of, meet the 7th, the 21st, and then probably sometime in early February.
February 4th.
February 4th. So
Right.
You're looking really at the 21st in the, of January and the 4th of February for the two meetings.
Okay. That's helpful. Other, uh, comments or questions? Okay, uh, the most, yes.
I'm sorry. Do we motion in second to amend the, um, millage?
I don't need it now. Thanks.
Um, no, we just took it.
Took it off the table. Okay. Thank you.
So are you making the motion?
Uh, Joe, remind me again what the updated millage rate would be for, uh, only a half a mil tax increase?
Uh, it'd be 16.22.
All right. I'll make a motion to amend the, uh, millage to 16.22.
There's motions there.
Second.
Motion in second. Uh, discussion on that millage. I think we've had all the discussion we can have about it. Um, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Your banks.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Mr. Allison.
Yes. Motion passes 7-0. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Thank you, Mr. Yoder for moving that and the second, whoever that was. I missed it. Um, in any case, Mr. Banks. Um, we will move on to item 11. Except for filing Bureau of Code's report, October 2020, and the Williamsport Municipal Water Authority, uh, from 10/28/20 and Williamsport Municipal Sewer Authority, 10/28/20 minutes. Is there a motion in second?
Moved. Second.
Uh, moved in seconded. Uh, any questions or corrections to those minutes? Hearing and seeing none, Mrs. Frank on the motion, please.
To Yoder.
Yes.
Mr. Mackey.
Yes.
Mr. Pelizzi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
The banks.
Yeah.
Ms. Mealy.
Yes.
Allison.
Yes. Motion passes. Thank you, Mrs. Frank. Um, we'll move to announcements. Um, I, I need to amend the announcements. Um, council will be having one more meeting. One more special meeting this year. Uh, date to be determined, but between, uh, Christmas and New Year's that week. Um, to, uh, deal with some, the city insurance issues that have to be done by the end of the year. Our final bit of house cleaning. So, uh, the next regularly scheduled city council meeting, uh, that's already in the queue is January 7th, 2021 at, uh, 7:00 PM remotely. However, um, we will have a meeting before that, the end of the year. Um, comments from council members tonight. Mr. Banks.
I want to drag this out, but, um, Chief Hagan, did you give a date on, um, Chief Seacrest's retirement? I thought it was early in January, right?
Uh, yes. 30 years to the day, January 4th.
Yeah, I thought, so I thought it was before our next official council meeting. I just wanted to make sure that, um, you know, I'd hope I get a chance to acknowledge the assistant chief.
Yes.
For his service. So, um, I don't, I don't know if we could, I don't know if he wants to come to a council meeting after, after 30 years of service, but, um, after he's retired. But if we could pass it on to him, um, this is a very unofficial way of saying it, but in some sort of official capacity.
Thank you, sir. I will. And I, I'm sure he will greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Other comments from council? Council from, or comments from the administration tonight. Uh, Mayor Slaughter.
Briefly, I'll say thank you to the city council administration for their hard work, uh, during this budget session. I share in your sentiments and will show you that it, uh, will be much better, uh, in the, in the very near future. Uh, and secondly, just to echo Adam Wenders said earlier, as we all know, this was a record-breaking snowfall. Um, and, and our public safety and public works folks are out there, um, working diligently. I know everybody wants their roads cleared. Um, as soon as possible, we're getting there. Um, and our, our public works folks are, are working extremely, extremely hard. Uh, so just bear with us a little bit longer here. Um, and, you know, we'll, we'll get all of the things, all the streets, uh, cleared off just as soon as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Um, we have one, uh, comment from the public tonight, uh, that I'm going to read. It's from, uh, Misty Dion. Uh, Center for Independent Living, 24 East Third Street, Williamsport. President Allison and members of city council, the citizens of Williamsport with disabilities urge council not to approve the mayor's proposed $450,000 in the city hall maintenance upgrade fund, uh, as it is desperately needed for a number of things, but specifically for access. Access is far overdue, 30 years overdue to be exact. On another note, the city's poor display of their inability to remove snow efficiently causes further access issues for the citizens, especially the disability community who are